Well, welcome you all to the Middleton City Hall. I'm going to call the meeting of the Middleton Common Council for August 20th, 2019 to order. So the first item is your call.
Coon.
Here.
Burke.
Present.
Fazard.
Here.
West.
Present.
Olson.
Here.
Ramsey.
Here.
Felvin.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Present.
So the next item is the comments from the citizens present. It's limited to three minutes per speaker. And we have somebody to keep track of the time?
Sure.
Okay, so we're going to start with the first one is Julie Loeffler. So Mike, you're keeping me down.
Is this all right? Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm Julie Loeffler, and as everybody knows, I'm a member of the citizen, I'm a Springfield citizen rep on AMPEC, and I'm only here for a very short clear-up. Last week I spoke, and very briefly, about my opposition to the amendment that was, the resolution that was passed. In the section of the draft minutes that you have in front of you entitled "Comments from Citizens' Presence," my comments were summarized as follows. Julie Loeffler spoke in opposition to Resolution 201931 for the airport master plan, planning process. She stated input is requested, she stated input is needed before the process begins. I am requesting that the draft minutes be corrected at the Common Council meeting tonight to reflect accurately what I actually said. The summary of what I said is correct in that I spoke in opposition to Resolution 201931. However, the rest of the summary is inaccurate because I did not state or employ that input was needed before the process begins. I made three main points, and I would just want to put them on the record again. One point was that I said that the resolution by requiring adherence to the scope of services in the Meat Hunt contract directly contradicts what the city via repeated statements by city administrators, both to the public and media, had assured everyone. Administrators said that there would be ample opportunity for pressing public concerns to be addressed in the airport master planning advisory committee process, even if it took a longer timeline and more meetings than originally envisioned, and that the city might end up with a master plan that doesn't recommend any changes to the airport. I stated that the scope of services in the Meat Hunt contract, to my knowledge, does not appear to include addressing any option that the airport remain in its current footprint, so that by directing that AMPEC adhere to that contract, the city common council in passing Resolution 201931 would be directly contradicting the city's previous promises. And the next point I made was that Resolution 201931, by adhering to the timeline set forth in the scope of services, does not allow AMPEC sufficient time to receive and consider accurate and unbiased information on issues of public importance that should inform committee members in the advisory role they've undertaken. The third point I made was that I wanted to hear from everybody with an interest in this matter, and this is a direct quote, including the city, including Meat Hunt, and including the public who could be affected by these airport issues. And I believed that the limitations posed by the contract didn't allow for the additional time and meetings and information that we needed to fully consider the circumstances.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, thanks. As these three points show, and no point did I say that the Common Council meeting needed input before the process begins, and I did not mean to imply that. I reviewed my comments on the video, and I simply ask that you correct the minutes to so show that I did not say that I wanted information needed before the process. You could say, she stated more information is needed during the process. It's a simple correction, and that is all that I'm asking for. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Julie.
Yep.
So the next one is Reverend Charlie Brandt.
Hi, I'm here in behalf of Cross Lutheran Church to talk about the congregation that is in Bishop's Bay that hopes to build. We have gone through a process. We are currently worshiping in the Bishop's Bay Clubhouse, and it is a very small facility, and we are struggling for space. It is approximately half the size of this room. There are a capacity of about 50 people. We average about 100. There are parking issues. They have to park down the hill. There's no parking really at the facility. And what we are looking for and asking for is to be considered for a place to have an identity as a church. That's one of the things we really need. A permanent place. And then also a permanency? I mean, if you can't even put up a temporary sign, what does that suggest to the possibility of growth as a congregation? And we feel it could be a great addition to Middleton, to the Bishop's Bay community, and that's all we're looking for. We've gone through the process with the zoning, the planning. Planning asked us to come here, and so we're here. And asking for your assistance, consideration, and that is all.
Thank you, Reverend. So the next one is Jocelyn Sen Singh, our library director.
Good evening. Just wanted to give a mid-year update as to what's happening across the street and out in the community. In regards to the next chapter, we've made some space changes just this last week that have really demonstrated how we're trying to maximize the most of our square footage while meeting immediate needs. So that's really exciting. If you haven't been to the library in a while, now's a great time to visit. We're also changing up our staffing models a little bit by consolidating several of our points of service. That will allow us to leverage staff in a little bit different way and really maximize the staffing that we do have. The fundraising effort continues, and the library board recently secured a matching grant in the first naming rates. There are also four grants in progress right now. In regards to staff, the summer reading program 2018 just broke last year's record at 2,158 participants. Staff did an amazing job during some, several key vacancies over the summer by meeting all of the needs of everyone's literacy interests and beyond out in the community through lots of different outreach events. The teen volunteer program this summer was another huge success. We had over 30 teens volunteer. I don't even know yet quite how our numbers are totaling up with how many hours they were there, but this was a really great way for teens to get more involved. We also had a couple visits from the youth center, which was really fun. We've had some key staff turnover, as I mentioned, in the youth services department. All have been promotions and one new hire in adult services. So that's been really exciting. These have also allowed Amy Perry to go full-time outreach and engagement, and we're crafting right now what that's looking like. For our volunteers, the friends have been really busy moving their store upstairs. So the ongoing sale that made the majority of their ongoing revenue that was on the main floor of the library has now doubled in space and moved towards the back and consolidated with the lower-level sale. So they're in the process right now of managing their inventory and continuing to support the library through a variety of different funding methods. The, also hoping to create more volunteer opportunities this coming fall for all ages. The library board's been busy drafting the strategic plan, which will be approved at the September board meeting, and of course, the 2020 budget. So those are just a few things of what's happening at the library, and of course, Strolling Jazz Friday, September 6th. Thanks.
Thank you, Jocelyn. So the next one is Amanda Brandt.
Hi, I'm here speaking in favor of Cross, of the Cross Lutheran Church. I am a Sunday school teacher. I work with the kids, and we had, this last year, we had nine kids in our elementary-age Sunday school, which only had one classroom to house grades first through sixth grade, basically. Our youth group ends up heading to shuttle to McDonald's, and we have to be creative with how we, how we reach our kids in our church. And I guess what we're asking for is just for any help in getting to this permanent facility. We have the possibility of the land, just cannot build on it right now, and we've been waiting. We've been in the clubhouse now since, for three years, since August 14th of 16, and we've been waiting for this chance to build. And with the possibilities out there and not quite being able to reach it, we're really excited to get going on some of the ministries that we want us to reach in reaching the community that we're in. One of them being Vacation Bible School in the summer, being able to get families together to, in a safe environment, to do family activities, different things that can reach both our church, but also others out there that are looking for those safe, enriching programs that we think we can provide once we have the space. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Amanda. So the next one is Reverend Joel Brandt.
Hey, everyone. I'm also speaking on behalf of Cross Lutheran Church. I'm actually the pastor out there. Our church has been kind of stuck in a quagmire of factors that are outside of our control. We've been stuck there for years now, and we're really working through every possible idea we can come up with which would help us to change our situation. And that's why we're here. We're asking for help. We need your help. And we're asking the city to allow us to build forward on Anken Road with a temporary well and holding tank, and then gladly we will hook up to the city's water and sewer when that becomes serviceable to the site. If you guys can come up with a different or another alternative, we are happy to hear that. We just want to go forward as a church, because it's hard. I mean, you've already heard that trying to establish a sense of permanence in a community where you're trying to reach the people, but where you don't have a home base to operate out of, it's tough. Each and every week, we haul everything we can into church, and we haul it out with us. We set up the chairs, and we have a general rule where if it doesn't fit in the back of my car, we don't need it for Sunday morning. I mean, we're portable, we're light, and, and that's ultimately, ultimately a challenge for us, because if we're here to try and reach people, not having that permanent presence, some people don't even know that we're there. Now, obviously, we're a church. We have our own mission. We love God, and we love other people, and that's why we're there. But you might not have any sense of spirituality or your own sense of where you might be on your own spiritual journey. Everyone's in a different place, and honestly, I can respect that. I really can. So you might be asking yourself the question, well, then, why should we help this church? Or what's in it for the community of Middleton? And here's the answer. Churches make good neighbors because they don't exist for themselves. They're here in the business of trying to connect with other people, loving other people. That's what we do. And what that does is that becomes a catalyst for creating community. We've all lived in neighborhoods where you have a bunch of residents, but you have no community. If you have somebody that's actively out there trying to connect with people, serving one another, helping other than, that's where community grows, because people care about each other. And that's actually what churches do. And that's what we want to be able to do. That's what we're trying to do as best as we can with the limited resources that are at our disposal. But it's tough, and we know we could do so much more. And so if you think about the benefits of having a church in Middleton, having a church in the community of Bishop's Bay more specifically, I mean, we're not a business. We're not in it for the money. We're not trying to make money, and we're not even there to serve ourselves. We're just there to serve the people that are in the community, the people we're trying to reach. And so that means everything we do is going to be for others. If we start youth programming, teen ministry program, ask yourself, does Middleton have a need for quality, safe teen programming for pre-teens and teenagers? I think you do. I think we all do. What about children and family ministry? You've already heard it mentioned. Children's ministry, family events in the summer, or even after-school care provided? As our ministry grows, there's things we hope to be able to do, even starting a school or a childcare center. We'll cross those bridges when we come to it, but we can't do it without your help. And that's why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Next one is Professor Kurt Paulson.
It's hard to follow the reverends. My name is Kurt Paulson. I'm on Ramsey Road, and I'm here to speak on behalf of, item before you, the ordinance to create a workforce housing committee. I think it speaks for itself, and, but the motivation for this is during new committee orientation, one of our committee members asked why it's a ad hoc committee instead of a permanent committee, and we said, that's a good question. And so the mayor asked me to draft an ordinance, so that's what's before you, and that's why, that's the provenance of why it's before you tonight. So urge your support, and it can answer any questions you have. Thanks.
Great job, Kurt. So the next one is Taylor Brengo.
Let me just put this in front of here. Okay. Taylor Brengo, the community of Bishop's Bay. I'm here to talk about the Cross Lutheran proposal and on Anken Road, which is Bishop's Bay. I have two documents that I'd like to hand out.
Thanks.
One is the MDP, an excerpts of that. The MDP is the Master Development Plan for the community of Bishop's Bay. This is created for, you know, the, what we call the community of Bishop's Bay, which is about 800 acres. It's a master plan community that is, you know, it's about 1,600 sing, 1,600 multifamily units, 1,350 single-family units, and 300 square feet of commercial space, as well as other parks and civic uses. So as you can imagine, with a development this size, there's flexibility that's afforded such a master plan. So what I've highlighted here is the MDP. It says the purpose of this document, of the MDP, is to afford flexibility in the development process. I think that's paramount to successful development is flexibility. What we have before us is a three-acre church user that can get by on private sanitary and private well. It doesn't need $18 to $24 million of public infrastructure funded by the developer that the developer, quite frankly, isn't ready to order up yet. The developer's not ready to pay for the over $500,000 a year in carrying costs for that financing arrangement, because at this point, we're working on phase five, which is 86 lots in Westport. In the background, we've finished four phases in the Backman neighborhood in Middleton. What we're talking about is three acres.
Excuse us, can you grab the microphone?
What we're talking about is three acres on this 20-acre parcel right here that's designated for civic uses. So this is consistent zoning-wise. The hurdle that's in front of us is utilities. So I turn you to page 98 of the Master Development Plan, the MDP, where I've highlighted installation utilities will be phased with development. Phasing of utilities will be designed to function reliably both in the short term and the long term. So the long term is this $20 million nut that the developer has to order up. The short term, in my mind, is the private utilities, which if you turn to the second handout I gave you guys, it's Middleton ordinances per 9.05, three, or two and three. You're only required to connect to public utilities if they're within 100 feet of the property line. That's not the case here. It's over five miles of water loop that we have to put in, hence the $20 million. Section 9.05.
Thirty seconds.
Three talks about that private services, such as a well and septic, are permitted where public services are not afforded. So that's clearly the case here. There are not public utilities available for this property. So I ask, there's nothing in the way, you know, we talked about stormwater comes up on the staff comments. I think that's something that can be resolved at the SIP level. So just ask some direction to find a way forward, because at this point, you know, in talking with the developer, you know, if we can't make this work, I don't know what's the point in going forward with, you know, the Bishop's Bay side of the, Middleton side of the Bishop's Bay development.
Anybody else who may want to speak? Anybody else who may want to speak? Yes, Mike?
Mayor, I just want to point out, we realized when Julie Loeffler was asking about amending the minutes, that we failed to put both the minutes and the bills on this agenda. So my apologies for that omission, and I think, you know, finance has already approved the bills from a finance perspective, but we won't be able to have that on the agenda tonight for the council. So my apology.
So you will put down the next council agenda?
Yes. We'll have two sets of minutes on the next council agenda and two sets of bills for the formal approval of the bills.
Well, it happens.
Thank you.
Yeah, as Bill pointed out, we'll need to pay the bills.
So what do we do for that, then?
Legally, you can't vote on it, though, right? Larry?
Correct.
So...
We'll, we'll do that administratively. We'll take care of the bills. I didn't note any concerns from the finance committee about the bills?
Or none.
Okay. All right. Anybody else who may want to speak? All right. So we're going to move to the, it's beyond 7:35. We're going to go to the public hearing part of it. This is all in Hospitality LLC is requesting a Class B fermented malt beverage and Class B intoxicating liquor license. They are located at 1601 Aspen Commons, Milton, Wisconsin, with Andrew Nicholson, 901 Parkside Dry, Wanakee, Wisconsin, as the agent. Does anybody wants to speak either in favor or against it? Does anybody want to speak either in favor or against it? There are no speakers, so I'm going to close that part of the hearing, and we are going to move on to the presentations. The first one is our very own distinguished Perry Hibener. He's going to have presentation for Middleton Cross Plains Area School District Education Foundation. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank council member Fazard for asking us to do this presentation tonight. One thing I guess I would say to everybody here in attendance is that part of being in the good neighbor city is being good neighbors all the time. And I, I personally take great pride in being a member not only of the Education Foundation Board, but also a member of the Middleton Endowment Board, and I see Curtis here tonight. Mark has served on that board with me for a few years, because again, and I, and I, we all give of our time, we give of our money, because we want to make this a better place for everybody. And that's what the Education Foundation is trying to do, particularly for our students in the Middleton Cross Plains Area School District. So we currently have 17 board members. Luke and I are two of those 17. The picture in, in the image there is from their retreat that they held in July. One of the things I'm most excited about that retreat is that they, they were presented with four initiatives to try to raise funds for that the district said, we don't, we don't have the, as much as we're a well-to-do district and we, we get great results, we don't have the funds to do everything. A quick history about the foundation, because again, some of you in this room may say, didn't even know the school district had a foundation? The quick story behind it is I've been told anecdotally that there was a woman in Cross Plains who, when she died in the early 2000s, left a million dollars to the Madison Public Schools Foundation, because there wasn't a mechanism to give to Middleton Public, Middleton, Cross Plains Public Schools. So in 2009, the district, Don Johnson, the superintendent at the time, said, we'd like to have a foundation for people to be able to give, whether it's $1 or a million dollars or somewhere in between. So...
Did you get that million dollar back, or?
We haven't gotten it back yet, Kurt. No, we're still working on that. So if you know of anybody who wants to, not that I want them to pass away anytime soon, let me know, please. So some of the highlights there, one of the ones I'd like to point out is in 2011 when they joined in partnership with Madison Community Foundation. So MCF has more than a billion dollars in assets, okay? We're a very small part of that. We have two funds through them, the combined total of which is about $325,000 right now. But again, for those of you who are familiar with endowment funds, what that does is it allows, allows the money to be, get, get back to you in perpetuity. So if they were to stop giving tomorrow, if they didn't raise anything more than that $325,000, they get, based on the interest they get from the foundation, from MCF, about $15,000 annually. So again, we keep, I think a couple of board members, I don't know if Luke is one, but they've told me they're getting off the board as soon as we get that number to a million. So... Again, we showed these numbers to the, to the board in, in July at their retreat. You know, you look at those numbers, and you can see that they've done pretty well. And I'll give you a comparison, and I don't mean to, but Middleton Endowment, who I also has, has, think has done pretty well, has about 225, I think, Kurt, right, in our endowment there. So, and we got started later with the Education Foundation. We also have a larger base to choose from, so I think that helps us. The fact that we've raised more than $100,000 for the last five years is impressive, I think in one sense, but it also might point to the fact we stagnated a little bit. So one of the things Luke and other members of the board have decided upon is that we're hiring executive directors starting next year, somebody who's got a development background, because we really are sincere about trying to double and triple this number here in the next couple of years. This just shows some of the grants from the past year. One of the things I'll point out for the council, though, that I think is of interest, and I think it was four years ago now, but the Middleton Youth Center received a $1,000 grant for a photography club that they've done when they were at Clark Street, now that they're at Cromrye's. So again, we have 10 schools in the district, soon to be 11 once Pope Farm gets built, and all of our schools have received multiple grants. You can probably guess which schools have received the most grants. It's the ones that don't have maybe the most robust parent-teacher organizations. So those schools like Sauk Trail tend to get quite a bit more from the foundation because they need it. So again, they've been giving out grants since 2013. I'm, I'm proud to show that number up at the top there, that they've been able to award more than $100,000 in that time, and more than 100,000, or more than 100 grants. And you can see where the focus had been. The, I mean, and it's not that they won't continue to do these things, but they've shifted their focus here in the last couple of years. Another thing that they've done, that they've started, and I'll, I'll take you that number at the bottom, since they started awarding scholarships in 2016, they've awarded more than 18,000. And, and the, the one thing that's not on here that they, that they're starting to do now is the high, or the district has a grow-your-own program. For those of you familiar with our district, you know that we're more diverse than we've ever been. About 20% of our student population are students of color. Our staff does not reflect that. We have, we've gotten better at hiring administrators of color, but our teaching staff is probably like 3%, 4% staff of color, and we'd like it to be more reflective of our student population. It is hard, though, to recruit staff of color. If you've got options, you're going to go someplace where they're going to pay a lot more, and where you're going to see a lot more people who look like you. So one of the things we're trying to do is get our students of color to consider going into education and coming back and working for us when they're done. And what we're doing as a foundation is we'll help pay for their education, and then if they work for us for three years, they get that, basically, they get, they don't have to pay any of that money back. So we awarded $10,000 to the district this year to identify two students, and our goal is to get at least four or five in the pipeline every year. And I'm, I'm excited about that from, you know, as, as an employee of the district, if we can get more staff of color that way, I think it'll be very helpful. Some of the other things from 2019, Mike and I were two of the, two of the teams that participated and lost, I will point out, in the Good Neighbor Festival trivia contest. Are you going to win this year, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, because my team certainly isn't. I know that. So my family's already told me they're not going to be of any help to me whatsoever. So they do an annual appeal every year. They'll be getting that out here shortly, and the last three years, they've raised more than 20,000 each year. I'm excited they've already found, and mainly due to Luke's efforts, three businesses that are willing to match, and they're, so they've already funded $15,000 the appeal for this year. So again, all these things that have helped them raise a lot of money. The thing I'll last highlight on, and then I'll finish up, is that, so again, I talked a little bit about that grow-your-own program, but they're really trying to do more to help the district with their equity efforts. So one of the things this year in Madison in October, there will be an MSAN conference, and we're going to help sponsor that conference. Another thing is, it pains me to say that some of our musical instruments are 50, 60 years old, so the district's looking at probably a $450,000 initiative to try to get new band instruments, which we are excited about. We're going to do our share with that, but because we hope that also makes our music orchestra, or band orchestra and choirs, look more like our student population, because they look way too much like me without the gray hair. Okay? And then, so again, those are some of the areas that we're focused on over the next couple of years. And Luke, did I miss anything?
The only thing I would say, Perry, is we're doing, our annual appeal is probably going to kick off around October 1st, and just, Perry mentioned the 350K roughly endowment. Just for some comparable numbers, Sun Prairie has over a million dollars in their endowment. So it's impressive what we've done so far, but if we want to catch up, we've got a little bit of ways to go.
Yep. But thank you for the time.
Any other questions? Great job, Perry.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Well, the Good Neighbor Fest is around the corner, and we have the Good Neighbor Fest president here, Kurt Fazard.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. And Laurie, do I have a slide presentation for this?
It's in the packet, so Bill is going to project.
Oh, great, great. Yeah, thanks. Well, let me just...
Before you get started, I'm sorry I'll miss it. I'm sure you'll do a fabulous job.
Thank you. Yeah. Well, for the rest of you, I hope, I hope you'll join us. The, I guess the thing I'm most excited about, and I'm sorry, Kurt Fazard with the chamber and also the Good Neighbor Festival. Every year, we have the opportunity as the president to choose a theme, and this year, I embrace the theme of celebrating those who serve. And so in this room, we have obviously Captain Hellebrand, and we'll be celebrating first responders. We'll be celebrating current and former military personnel. We'll be celebrating Shaun, and Matt, and Mark, and others who are part of the city, and Jocelyn, and Mark, who do so many wonderful things, and Perry, our teachers, and our who do so many wonderful things, and Perry, our teachers, and our healthcare workers, and Abby, and, so, there's so many people and so many organizations, so much of this culture in the Good Neighbor City needs to be celebrated. And we want to make, make sure we do that. And Mike, you know, we, we received comments from our citizens saying, hey, can we thank the people who are plowing our streets and keeping them clean and doing so many wonderful things? Exactly, yeah. So, so it's all about celebrating those who serve, and I, I'm just absolutely delighted that the rest of the board is, is equally embracing that, that mission statement. If, should I address something here?
He started up in the screen.
Oh, great. Okay, so Bill, we can move on. So, we've been doing this since 1964. So, there's obviously a legacy, and I think that Bill, as, as we'll see with the next slide, really the important thing is that it started, thanks to the service clubs in the community, and it continues each and every year to be executed and provided to our community through these various service clubs. And so, as you think in terms of the service clubs and what they do, every dollar that comes to them as a result of the Good Neighbor Festival will go back into the community in the form of the service club projects and activities. So, the, the one I'll point out here, Rotary Club of, of West Town, it's the new addition, it's the, the newest member of the trustee board, and they'll be hosting a bingo tournament. Okay, Bill, thank you. Next up. So, we'll have the Kitty Parade on Friday night, we'll have the, the big parade on Sunday at noon, and just so many wonderful opportunities to provide an outlet for people to come together. Captain Hellebrand will be running with me in the 5K, and he's the early favorite to, to win the thing.
Sure.
So, lots of things that are recurring this year. Happy to report that we have new things, such as our new K-9 team, we've got food from Club Tavern, and as I was telling the folks at NBC 15 recently, it's going to be good tasting food, and it's going to be sourced, much of it, by Willie Street Co-op. So, it'll be tasting good, and it's going to be good for you. What a concept. So, we have Fish Fry Friday night, that's new. The chicken dinner, we used to have that, and we're bringing that back. And then, Willie Street will be providing some specialty brats and burgers and, and things like that on Sunday. The Wisconsin Remembers Memorial Wall, it's very important that we have that available for viewing on Sunday. I mentioned bingo and pickleball. I was intent upon having something to bring people my age onto the festival grounds. So, on Saturday, we'll have pickleball all day long. It'll be super. These are some of our sponsors. I was talking to you, Mayor, about our presenting sponsor. It's a three-year agreement that we have with Willie Street Co-op. The next page shows more sponsors, and just, the community has really come out and, and shown their support for us. And I think that might be about it. I, I did want to highlight, perhaps you've seen the insert for the, the Middleton Times Tribune, and if you did, you notice that Perry Hibner is super buff and really in outstanding shape here. So, I left some of these out front. I thank you all, and, and the alders, and the city staff, and the mayor, and everyone else. You are serving our community, and so we want to celebrate you as well. So, thank you for all that you do.
Let's give everybody a big hand. All right. So, we are on to approval of the consent agenda. We are missing the minutes and the financing. So, we've got five items here, so need a motion to approve.
Motion, no, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion passes unanimously. Should we go to the church thing, or wait? Do you want me to go to the church item?
It's empty. It's kind of commercial, so.
Okay, let's, do you have anything to present?
I don't know what's in here. Could speak more.
Okay, let's go to the agreements. And this is the amendment to agreement number three, with Waybaker for designing drainage services for Donald Drive Sedimentation Pond. This is the repair of the flood damage, and this is additional staking and design, and asking for $2,500.
The approval is recommended by finance. Second.
Any questions or comments? Hopefully, this is the last amendment, and we will have that thing done soon. I was there yesterday, or a couple of days ago, they have started the process, and I hope it will get done soon. So, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion passes. Item number two.
Mayor, could we move to recommendations, proposals?
Okay.
The concept review for the church and the community.
All right. So, let's, I was thinking about it. Thank you, Susan. The recommendation of proposals, the concept review for church in the community of Bishop's Bay, Cross Lutheran Church, Onkin Road, and it has gone through public works and all various committees. So, who's going to take it? Larry, you do?
No.
Mike? Anyone else? Abby? Is Abby here?
I can provide some context. I, I think what's difficult about this is that we have an agreement that was approved between the city and the developer for community of Bishop's Bay to systematically provide utility services to serve that area over a significant period of time. The developer has chosen to extend that agreement on a couple of occasions, I believe, to 2021 was the most recent iteration. And there are many different policy reasons why making exceptions is quite difficult, and, in fact, we've listed a couple of them on the agenda comments, one of which is that it's inconsistent with the master development plan, and that the, for the zoning of the property includes regional stormwater facilities by which the developer agreed to have all of the water infiltrate or be retained on site. And to do that by bits and pieces over time, it would be rather difficult engineering-wise, as well as mechanically. So, those are two reasons. But foremost, is to serve that area, we need a regional system. The regional system would serve other parts that may yet be developed, but it would primarily serve the community of Bishop's Bay for adequate water pressure.
Water and sewer.
Yeah. What did I say?
Regional system.
Regional-
Water and sewer.
Water and sanitary sewer system.
That's what it was.
Yes. Yep. So, that's a problem. And, you know, the church folks who came up to speak, I, you know, I sympathize with them, as I, I'm sure you do, too. We'd like to have them in the community, and perhaps in a part of the development that's served by water and sanitary sewer. And why that hasn't happened, I don't know. But for the city to set a precedent to allow an exception for one user, then how would we be able to say the same for the next user that also is not served by water and sanitary sewer? So, in the bigger picture, matter of fairness to all potential users of community of Bishop's Bay.
So, could they build in the area where there's already sewer and water? I mean, that's a possibility.
Of course they could. It'd be a matter of, of the developer switching the location as part of perhaps an amendment to the specific implementation plan. Now, we're getting into the planning area. So, Abby, I don't know if you want to address that question or not.
I don't think that there are any planned areas within the community of Bishop's Bay that would allow for civic use that are already served by water and sanitary sewer. I think the areas that are served currently are, are single-family residential. There are other areas in the city of Middleton, you know, where this would be a permitted use and that are served. But within the community of Bishop's Bay, there are not.
Susan.
A question for Abby, and, and I'm not sure if you can answer this. Has the developer already sold this land to the church?
No. The land is owned by the Wisconsin Foundation, which is Terrence Wall's charitable foundation. He's working, his charitable foundation is working to sell the property to, I'm not sure if it's the entire 20 acres, or if it's just a portion of the property that would be subdivided. But the, the Wisconsin Foundation would sell the property to the church.
And how, how long would it take, like in the pipeline, for that to have city sewer and water? Is that like two years out, five years out, 10 years out?
Well, the current agreement is for the developer to begin construction of the regional sewer and water facility in-
City to begin.
Sorry, yeah, thank you. The city under the utility district in 2021. I don't know how long it would take for the infrastructure to be to the Onkin Road site. I'm not sure about that.
Well, Sean could probably answer based on the plans the last time, but I don't think it was years.
Sean, you want to take a note?
Thank you, Emmy.
Well, so there are two components to this. One is sort of off-site slash regional, and that's the part that the city would undertake with a financing package to be repaid over time by the developer. Everything internal is on the timeline of the developer. The city's not involved with constructing the internal water mains, once we get it to the edge of the community of Bishop's Bay, essentially.
Got it. So, in that case, Sean, the edge of Onkin Road?
It's really planned right now. Balls are at Q, and then internally, going eastward and somewhat northward, as the subdivision builds out and grows. It, it extends the network plant by plant.
So, are you still saying 2021? Are you saying?
Our current agreement is to do this utility district improvements of major water and sewer infrastructure in 2021.
But if you, if the city did that part, it's still dependent on the developer.
To take it the last mile.
Take it, it's probably-
Doing internal development, that's correct.
Development. So, that could be considerably longer.
It could be. Yeah, that's not on our timeline.
It's not on, it's not us. And when other developers, I'm thinking, I'm a resident of Middleton Hills, and I moved into the very first phase where we had water and sewer for that, but each additional phase is they took, developed it, that's when they added on the water and sewer.
Usually, that goes, yeah, phase by phase.
As I remember, it was the first phase, and then a whole lot of field.
Right.
And they would slowly add roads, so on. And so, that's the typical way a developer does this.
Right.
Robert?
Just for clarification, you say we have control over the, the water and sewer up to a certain point, but isn't even the part that we have control over, isn't that financed? How, how is that financed, and is, is that from the developer?
It's financed through city borrowing with repayment by the developer.
It is fully within our control. So, I mean-
Per agreement.
It's not, we're not waiting, we're not waiting on the developer for that portion of it?
We are waiting for the developer.
That's what I thought.
We are. We are waiting for the developer to, to ask us to, to build that structure to Onkin Road and, or to Q. But he has to be ready to develop the unserved areas before we can-
Right. Okay. So, that's, that's it. We, we have control over doing the work, but until they ask us, because they're, i- i- until they're ready for it-
Correct.
It makes no sense to spend the money, develop it, just a dead end in, in a wall.
Just a little history. The, the city designed the water and sewer system on its nickel. The city prepared bid package to select the contractors to construct the facilities that the city had designed. At the same time, the city was working on a development agreement, which provided that after the city paid to put it in, there would be gradual repayment of that cost. And it was enormous. It was like $17 million, as I recall, over time by the, by the Bishop's Bay developer. When the Bishop's Bay developer refused to sign the agreement, the city decided it could not let the contracts for construction, because the two were moving hand in hand until that happened.
And developer has paid that part of the money.
Well, the prior cost.
Prior cost, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's true.
So, I have a question that Taylor wants to say something. Can I allow him?
It's up to you. You're in charge here.
Something good or not?
It's up to you.
Do you really have something which you can add?
I think you addressed it. We paid the city back all of this.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, so that's good. Okay, thank you.
$30,000 paid for.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, it's, it's all taken care of, so. Okay, anyone else? Emily?
So, if I'm understanding right, it, we have our timeline, which is 2021, that it's going to go out to Q, and then the developer needs to keep building. So, are we stuck because the developer needs to come to counsel? And are we stuck because he hasn't formally said it, or is we stuck because he hasn't formally shown the development plans and timelines?
Process is that the developer needs to come to the city and say, please build this for us. We are ready to develop additional sections in Bishop's Bay where we will need the water access and the sewer access. That's what the water, there's a special water and sewer utility that has been established for this to, to perform. And until that happens, until the developer pulls the trigger on this, we're ready to go, we'll, we can send this stuff out to bid tomorrow, but it does no good if the developer's not ready to build there.
And I, I would agree with the practical implications of that. The actual way the, the agreement is structured, it requires the city to build this in 2021. We've deferred jointly through agreement.
But it's postponed from what? I think the original date to start was, was 19, or 18 or 19.
We bid in 16 and didn't accept those. We deferred to 19, we deferred to 21. But the agreement says the city will do this jointly. We've agreed to defer it.
Please wait, let me-
And if the city does-
Please, please, just let me, Taylor, you have something to add? I'm making an exception, so just very quickly.
He needs to come to the microphone, though.
Just a minute, please.
You guys have identified something critical, which is, the water is coming in at Ballzer, right here. I can't then extend that just for a church. I've got to have, so, you know, there's regional utilities, and then there's local, you know, infrastructure utilities. So, just because the city extends the loop right here, doesn't mean that I can then spend another 10, you know, I don't even know what that would cost, but probably $10 million of local streets and infrastructure to get to the church. So, just because it's delivered here, doesn't mean, regionally by 2021, doesn't mean that we're ready to go for the church, because we have to, we, we have to get it financed through a lender, and the lender has to see that there's other sales. So, we can't just do it for a one-off. So, that's why we're asking for a temporary solution to the need.
Yeah, but if you're saying that you can't do it for a one-off, and you're asking for a temporary, how long is temporary?
Good question. And-
Sounds like years to me.
The developer said that they would, the developer would agree in writing that this is not creating an, what do you, a precedent, and that the developer will not ask for multifamily or single-family housing on private well and septic. This is just because it's a low-volume user that is perfect candidate for what we're talking about here. I mean, you're, you're talking two people in the office maybe during the week, and then weekend services. So, it's a low-volume user, so the developer-
For my question.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, Katie, and then Susan.
No, I think Dan was-
Dan had a question, sorry. Dan had answered it.
You had a question?
The question I asked that you didn't answer is, how long is temporary? Well, you just got done telling me we're not going to-
I, as a developer, I'm, I'm not going to-
We're not going to use this as a precedent, you said.
Yep.
But we, we're, we're kind of bantering about the word temporary, and I'm trying to get a handle on what is temporary.
Temporary being until the regional utilities are extended to within 100 feet of the property line per ordinance. So, I think the churches said that they'd be willing to stub the utilities, meaning extend their services to the street, so that once those are, once utilities run along Onkin, then they, all they'd have to do is connect, which is simple. So, they'd be willing to pay for the cost to stub those utilities for future connections. But then, you know, have private well and septic, or, you know, private services until, per ordinance, those are extended to 100 feet of their property line. So, just until the, so I don't, I can't give you a date, because I, I don't have a crystal ball. I mean, you know, we thought we'd be, I, I wish we were done with this development by now, but we're not, because it's based on sales and the market, and I don't think anybody can predict where this market's going. You know, we, phase five is, phase five, we developed last year, 86 lots, sold two. So, you know, I'd love to be, you know-
You really can't tell me what temporary is?
No. Other, yeah.
Well, when I think temporary, I think six months to a year.
Larry, first Katie, and then you, and then Susan. Katie?
Uh, I'm, I'm just, I'm thinking that the church's beef should be with the developer and not the city. And I'm wondering, when you were promised you were going to have a church, were, were you told it was going to be 2021? Because it sounds like this was sort of publicly known, that it was going to be 2021, when this utility was hooked up. Is it okay that I ask them?
Sure.
Sure. Could somebody answer and go to the microphone, please? Could somebody answer and go to the microphone, please?
Sure, I can speak to that. We've been silently waiting the whole time. Just as all of this was going on, we've been worshiping in the wings and.
So, so you were told, come here, this is this awesome plot and build your church and it's going to be ready?
Well, the dates that were mentioned were kind of mile markers for us as well in the process. I was called to lead the church in 2015. And we were under the impression that 2016, the water lines would be going in. That was when the city was doing all the work. 16 became the possibility of 17. Then 19 was put in writing. So once we had something in writing, we were going forward with that. And now we're hearing 2021. And so like I mentioned at the very beginning, we're kind of just trying to get out.
And you haven't put any money into this.
Hmm. We've contracted with our architects. We've done site plans. But again, we don't want to take as much risk as, we want to take as little risk as we can until we have some certainty.
Have you shopped for other places?
Yeah, I think it's important to point out, sorry, originally, originally the church was going to go right here.
Uh huh.
And so that's when we started discussions with them, well, you know, a long time ago. Because the thought was to continue the development from back nine to Watermark, keep it in Middleton.
Yeah.
But it's when we got those bids back that our board and local investors said there's no way with the slow sales we've been having in Middleton, because of the high costs in Middleton, that they can afford $500,000 a year of payments to the city of Middleton, which are backstopped by the property owners, which we don't own the property. We're the developers. So the property owners are backstopping it with the ability for the city to special assess $500,000 a year. So I mean, it's, this is something that, you know, again, I go back to the flexibility that's needed for successful development. We need the flexibility to respond to market conditions. I can't go out and tell people to go buy houses. We have to respond as houses are being bought.
More questions? Katie? Okay. No. Larry and then Susan.
Yeah, I, I just want to ask a question of Mr. Brengle, if I could. You, you've offered a promise that, that you would not, or your, your company would not use the fact that permission had been granted for this project to push forward on development without sewer and water on any other properties you own. But it, isn't it true that there are two other developers who still own substantial portions of Middleton Bishop's Bay? And are they, would they be bound to your promise?
Other developers? Can you clarify?
Paulson?
Oh, so the landowners is what you're talking about?
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. So we have an option.
In this case, the.
Bishop's Bay Land Holdings is not a developer. They're an investor, but.
Anyway, are they, are they bound to this promise?
Paulson doesn't have a stake in the, they're not part of the, you know, I can't speak for Bill Paulson. No.
You don't own this property.
No, we've got an option to it.
And if you don't exercise the option, then it would be those property owners who would be owning that land.
That's fine. So what I'm, I understand the concern. And I think that there's a, some kind of a, I've talked to Matt Fleming, so I haven't talked to you unfortunately, Larry. I've talked to Matt Fleming at length about how, because I'm working on the other projects that T-Wall's doing, about waiting to look into the legalities of possible solutions until we have some direction from council. So I think that legally, I think we can solve it, you know, as you and I know, there's a million different ways to legally skin a cat or whatever the phrase would be, but Kurt.
You made an offer which you're, which Mr. Wall made earlier today in writing. And that would be very enticing if it applied to all of Middleton Bishop's Bay land, which it can't at the moment because there are two other major players who would not be bound to that unless your company exercised the option to purchase that land.
Maybe that's.
So if, for example, Mr. Paulson decided to develop the land on his own. He, he, unless he were barred from doing so, he could easily say, hey, you allowed the church to connect without, without providing for public sewer and water. Now I'm entitled to that too.
Yeah, and maybe it's like.
If you gave us such an assurance, that would be very different.
I can't speak for other people. Kurt Paulson at Plan Commission last time, or two weeks, four weeks ago, recommended maybe there's something in the SIP that we could put for this parcel stating when they have to connect. I mean, there's, there's certain ways we can address this. As far as limiting Paulson, no, I can't speak for Paulson. But is there something that the council could pass as far as modifying the MDP? Because right now, the MDP doesn't say that private services are unacceptable. There's no mention of private services in anywhere in the MDP, in the 144-page MDP that we have to work with. So if you guys want to propose an amendment to the MDP that says that as this development is concerned, on a case-by-case basis, this is a low-volume user, so we're allowing temporary private services with the understanding that once regional urban services are extended to the property, that it will connect to the property. But again, it's the chicken or the egg. We can't get users here and yet we're being handcuffed by this $20 million regional infrastructure that's still not solving the church's issue because that can't help them. Because we then would still have to put in the local improvements to get to this site. So, no, I can't speak for Kurt Paulson, but I think what I'm looking for is feedback from council, or sorry, Bill Paulson, sorry. Bill Paulson. Yeah. I can't speak for Bill Paulson, but what I can say is that, is there something? Well, Hartong Brothers are investors in the community of Bishop's Bay, so they, they have a vested interest in us. So no, I can't speak for them, but I have at least a, I can talk to them. I understand your concern, but Larry's.
It's liable to the city if it had agreement in recordable form that we could put against the title to these properties, that no one who owned land in Bishop's Bay could apply for development other than on public sewer and water without, and would not hold it against the city that it had approved a temporary church use.
Yeah.
But we don't have that.
At this point, I hate to say it, but this is conceptual. So I'm looking for the council's feedback on, is this something that you guys think is a good use? It's consistent with zoning. It just doesn't have the utilities available right now. So is it, if it's something that the council wants to move forward with, Larry, you, Matt and I can come up with a solution. I, I, I'm positive of it because I think we're all creative people. And then we'll bring that proposal back to the council. I'm not looking for a solution today. All I'm looking for is direction on the conceptual proposal before you.
Are you done, Daddy?
Sure.
Okay. Susan and then Emily.
I guess some of my questions have been answered. I'm going to say I've got some concern about this whole request just based on the history of T-Wall's developments in the city. And we have approved quite a few and they haven't ever been finished, such as Harvard Square and Tribeca. And I've got concerns, what you're saying, finding out that you don't even own all the land for this, we might not even get Bishop's Bay finished. It's certainly been a long time. It's at least 10 years or more since it first came to council. I think it's more like 11 or 12. So I've got real concerns about will the developer come through with their part?
Okay. Emily? Yeah, you can answer once. Emily, you have a question for him or?
Yeah, directly for him. One, can you get a scope, not tonight, but can you get a scope on the, how long is temporary? That was Dan's question. My thought is three or four years is my assumption, having lived in a development area back in Ohio. Two, can you get, whatever the language you sent to Larry, can you send that to the other landowners and get them to agree or may not agree to it? So we can have a statement as to their thought process and that would help us. And the last thing that does not involve you is that no one has talked about, one of the concerns that I have is that as, as a church, it's a nonprofit. That was said in, in early comments. But, you know, a lot of times when we're building out, we're building half million dollar homes. We know that because workforce housing starts at $400,000 in our city. And as a nonprofit is trying to build something, the land is very expensive. Where are they going to build? Now, maybe there are some places in town. Katie, I think that was a wonderful, or Alder Nelson, that was a wonderful concept. But there might be something about having it there because families are moving in. It's the geographic location. And so what are we doing as a city? Are we being sensible as we're helping development? Does that mean we have to go to every whim and application and request? No. But if, if people want to come and they're being thoughtful, I think we just need to be reasonable at times. So, thank you.
Yeah. So let me address those. So first, let me start off with Alder West's comment. So I think every developer has pitfalls, but also successes. Terrence Wall, you know, Middleton Center is a great beacon for downtown Middleton. So to say that we're failing to deliver is really offensive considering how much Mr. Wall's invested as far as time, money, resources in.
Harvard Square and Tribeca, we, I have a real problem with Tribeca especially because we established TIFF V based on the fact that we would have Harvard, or Tribeca as the leading driver for it. He has since sold that. That's where my problem is.
Right. And so Tribeca, we have Tribeca Apartments, so Tribeca 1, 2, 3. And Mig Brad Hutter now owns the property. So he's coming back to you guys for GIP. So I don't know if that's where that's coming from. But Green, you know, Greenway Center, that's all Terrence. So I, you know, look at how much tax base he's created for Middleton. So I don't, you know, so it's hard to say, yes, there's going to be failures, but.
But he's dragged things out.
Yep.
And Tribeca has not materialized like he promised it. And I think it was my first year in council, 12 years ago, when I met with him about this development.
When I think.
And it was a, I thought it was a fabulous plan, but it's really been slow. And I'm getting tired of, this whole water issue has been going on for years.
Yeah. So I mean, I think Terrence is a visionary. I think delivery is based on market conditions. So we've had ups and downs.
We don't have this problem with other developers.
That's fine. So Middleton Hills had its problems as well, as I'm sure a lot of you remember, as it went through the recession. You know, I think at this point, in talking with my boss.
When it went through, when we had the recession.
Yeah. So when I talked to my boss, he said, if this doesn't go through, we're going to seriously look at, maybe the development in Bishop's Bay does stop after, you know, we'll finish off Bishop's Bay and Westport, the homes that we have there. But, you know, if we can't come to an agreement on this, there's, if there's no flexibility afforded our development like the MDP afforded us, then there's no point in us spending money. Because I've told Terrence this a million times, we could build thousands of apartments, cash flow them, keep our banks happy, rather than ruining his reputation with council, with our lenders, with our investors, all of which are being torn through the mud because we're not delivering for things that are fully outside of our control. So it's frustrating for me as it is for you. And so I share that frustration. Moving on to the temporary question, I don't know. And, you know, the fact of the matter is the health, safety and welfare for the users of this site will be afforded through private services. There's no diminution in their use to fight fires, to provide for, you know, clean toilets through having a well and a, and a local services until those connections are made. As for the third, as far as land costs, the reason we're working with the church is because we're subsidizing the cost. The land prices have gone through the roof lately and we're, we're feeling that effect. But the reason why the Wisconsin Foundation site was selected is because that's a charitable foundation that Terrence has with the idea that we're donating the land, except for the release payment that we have to pay for the property, which is about $125,000 to the city of Middleton, which release payments on Phase 5 back in 2017 paid for $430,000 of design services. So, you know, we're paying into money that might never be used, but side, side note. So yes, the land is being donated. That's kind of why they're here. If they were to go anywhere else, it's going to cost a lot more. And I'll tell you that firsthand because I'm looking for apartment land all the time to develop and it's expensive right now. It's, it's frothy. So maybe we'll wait for the recession and see where things go.
Any other questions for Taylor? Anybody else? Mark? Anyone else? Robert?
Just a quick question. Isn't there a fear of precedent, not just with this property or this grouping of properties, including the Hartong Brothers and, and, and your brother Bill? I mean, if we set this precedent, can't other people in other parts of the city, which granted, there's not that many more places to develop, but isn't there a fear that this will be a precedent anywhere? And that anybody could potentially say, there's no, there's no water service or sewer service in this particular little area and we don't need it because you guys give, give that, give us a pass on that?
But the reality, and I think Sean could probably tell this to you better, is that the city has a very extensive grid throughout the developed portion of the city. And I, I seriously doubt if there is a vacant piece of land in the city other than Bishop's Bay, which is not contiguous to sewer and water services within a reasonable distance.
Mike?
I was just going to ask Larry, isn't this a case of equal protection under the law? Because if you allow it for one property, why aren't you allowing it for another property under similar circumstances?
I mean, could this happen with someone that develops north of Middleton Hills and that farmland who comes in and proposes, does the same thing?
Well, I would assume if it's farmland north of Middleton Hills, it has sewer and water services available at the north end of Middleton Hills. It's not, it's not two miles away or anything like that.
You want to ask some Mike's question?
Well, that, that is certainly a concern.
As far as this precedence concerned, that's not an ordinance. I'm not sure Larry or Mike, where this precedence concern, where is this coming from? And I'm just thinking aloud, when I looked through the ordinances, there's nothing in the ordinances that says that development can't be served on private. There's requirements to maintain the minimum state law as far as fire flow pressure and, you know, PSI and all these gallon per minute standards that I'm sure Sean knows in and out. But there's nothing that says that we can't have development on private sanitary or private su, private water. So I'm not sure why the precedence is all of a sudden something that's superseding ordinance.
There is in the land subdivision ordinance.
Okay. Well, if you could follow up with me on that, I'd appreciate that, Larry.
So you will show it when then? Okay. Yeah, you two can handle it. So any other questions for Larry or Taylor or Sean or Mike or anyone else? Okay. So what do we want to do with this now? So? What do you propose, Larry?
Not proposing anything.
No, it's, it's something to council, I think, to.
I'm sensing that this is not ripe for decision in that we should defer this again until possibly, until T-Wall can come back with some type of assertions from the other property owners that they're willing to be bound by a potential agreement.
We need to even defer it, just not take any action.
That's what he's doing.
And I'll move, move that we table it.
Okay. So need a second.
Second.
Okay. Now any questions or comments? Okay. The motion is to table it. So.
And just to clarify that too, that doesn't mean that we would put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Not until there's a motion, we remove it from the table.
So there would be a motion to remove it at a meeting and then it would be on a subsequent agenda. I just don't want the folks here to think that they have to come to every meeting.
Any questions or comments? The motion is to table it. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Me.
So the motion passes 7-1. Okay. Now we are on to agreements. So this is the item number two, agreement with Weir Becker for Design Engineering Services, Parkside Heights Road Construction.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. So the next one is license agreement with Dolores Hines retaining wall at 6613 Maywood Avenue.
Move approval is recommended by Public Works.
Second.
So now Dolores Hines, she passed away about two weeks ago. So would it be still the same thing or would there be any change?
Well, it would be with a personal representative of Ms. Hines' estate, I assume. There's an estate file.
She signed it before she died.
Oh, she signed it?
No.
Yeah, I, I think it's something that needs to be disclosed from...
It's David Hines, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, TR.
Yeah.
What does that mean?
Trustee.
Trustee, maybe.
So we don't record these, but we do count on property owners handing them to the next buyer, and we keep it in our property address file?
Okay, so they say, we can just vote on it?
I think so.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Item number four is very similar, license agreement with Mark Friesen and Katrina Maloney retaining wallets 6617 Maywood Avenue.
Motion to approve as recommended by PWC.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Item number five, water utility cross connection control program.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any question or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Ward of bid code professional services, this is the proposal for design services for the Lakeview Park Shelter from Arlo Everly.
Move approval is recommended by PRC and Finance.
I'll second it.
Okay. Now, Matt, I have a question in this case. Did you have three people bid on this? Three or more?
Back in 2017, we put out an RFP and had, I believe, four proposals that were reviewed. Arlo Everly was the selected firm at that point. The proposal initially included a schematic design for Lakeview, so once the schematic design was approved, we asked Arlo Everly for proposal to take it from the schematic design to the final process. We did not solicit additional service, request for services for this specific project.
So Larry, it's $94,000.
This is a design contract, it's not a public construction contract. So staff, staff is correct that, of course, the city could have been, but it's not required to be.
Just to clarify, the original package was sent to, I think, three or four different architects. And the original task was to design something to about 30% completion. Based on those, those submissions, Arlo Everly was the lowest bidder, and we chose them to continue with these designs to get us to 100% completion. So they won, essentially, they won the original, initial bidding for, for these park shelter designs.
Okay, all those, any other questions or comments?
Just keep us in the loop, we're excited.
Will do.
Well, it is pretty steep. Did you see it's $1.1 million potential?
Yes, that is, that is a concern of ours over in the Lakeview District, but we are excited about moving forward, and hopefully we'll cut some coupons and whittle some things. Fine.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Now, this is the budget. Item number one, authorizing staffing, sworn positions Milton Police Department.
So I, I will tell you that the joint personnel and finance concluded that the staffing level was supposed to be at 39.
Okay.
And I think we made a motion to that effect.
You did?
I'll make that motion again, that the, the agreement between personnel and finance was that the staffing level was 39.
Okay.
Second.
Anybody have question or comments? Susan?
Explain that more.
So the original, the concern was, was that some members believed, some staff members believed that when we replaced Officer Barrios, that that was a permanent addition, staffing levels at the police department. And the recollection of both personnel and finance was that, that wasn't an increment, that was just an early replacement. So the staffing level that, that was budgeted was 39 officers. That's still what we believe the right number is, is 39.
But we added one person last year, so that's what it means, so. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. So item number two, approval of the recruitment process for police chief and review of the salary range.
I'll move approval is recommended by Personnel and Finance.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Explanations of that, or do you, do you have the finance, or the joint?
I think for the public record, it's important to note that the Finance and Personnel Committees heard testimony about the concern with hiring a new police chief and having sufficient salary range or salary decision on, at what level to hire. And so Personnel and Finance agreed that up to $135,000 would be advertised, and that's what we would proceed with as staff. That doesn't mean that you would go to 135, and it is beyond the existing classification plan for the chief's position currently. So just as a backdrop for that, for public dissemination as well.
In addition to the approval of up to 25K for the executive search process?
Yes.
Okay.
We might as well bring in the other part, that we also asked for, for proposals on updating the staffing analysis.
Right.
For the entire city, not just the firm.
Right.
But we can't approve on that one, we are only...
No, we'll bring back...
Boarding, well, but Personnel and Finance has...
We'll bring, we'll bring back proposals both on the chief selection consultant, as well as options for a classification adjustment.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so the motion is approval of the recruitment process for police chief. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. We are on to licenses, application for Class B fermented malt beverage and Class C wine licenses by Eco Girl Industries LLC doing business as Hammer and Stain located at 1918 Palmetto Street. Lisa Delia Madison, Wisconsin is an agent. Need the motion to prove?
Approval?
Without the Class C.
Without what? No, it's a Class B fermented and Class C wine.
I think they're trying to update you on what happened at LNO.
Oh, okay, all right.
Just give us one second.
Okay.
So it's okay?
So move, uh, move approval for a Class B fermented malt beverage, Class B license, strike the Class C.
As approved by LNO.
As approved by LNO.
You can, you can do that, right?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so it's Class B. Okay.
Yes, and, and subject to the license fee being...
Okay. All right, so any other questions or comments? You all know the motion now, it's, uh...
Was there a second on that motion? I'll make a, I'll second that.
Okay, okay, it's the Class B fermented malt beverage and Class B.
That's it.
Just one?
Yeah, just the Class B.
Just B.
Just the B, so not the C. And they have to pay the fee. So all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. We are on to miscellaneous. Number one, renewal of membership and general liability insurance coverage with cities and villages mutual insurance company, Civic, and self insured retention levels.
I'll move approval is recommended by Finance.
Again.
Which also included the retention levels to be the same. Thirty-seven five.
Stay at current level, yeah?
Yeah.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. Item number two, direction of funding for needed dangerous tree removals.
Move approval is recommended by Finance. Funding source was contingency fund.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes.
Could I make a, just informational referral to CLC, just so they understand what, what's going on there?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, since that is servency lands property.
You can make a motion?
That's...
Okay, need a second?
Appro, a second.
Okay, all this information, all those in favor of the motion to refer it to CLC, our information, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes, all right.
And that's just for information, it's not to slow down the project.
That's the information, so.
Get your chainsaw out.
Okay, item number three, renewal of health insurance benefits program with Quartz Insurance.
Rule is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. So item number four, approval to recruit for the position of dining center coordinator for the Milton Senior Center.
I'll move approval.
I'll, I'll second it, as recommended by Personnel.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I'm here, and, and if you have any questions, so. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. We are on to ordinances. First reading, final action may be taken upon approval of motion to suspend rules under section 1.07 of Milton General ordinances. Item number one, the ordinance to ban use of electronic smoking devices wherever smoking is prohibited.
Move approval.
Second.
And I would actually recommend suspending the rules.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay. Any questions or comments? This is a good thing, you need a lot of bad effects. Yes, Robert?
Um, this one's very minor, uh, an ordinance to ban use of electronic smoking devices wherever smoking is prohibited, so a change of the title of the ordinance, adding the word of.
Okay.
Unless my copy's already outdated.
It's got it here.
My version.
The agenda says of.
But I'm reading the actual ordinance.
That's true.
The one who submitted comments?
I'm reading the actual ordinance, uh, number blank, which, so obviously that's going to be, so, an ordinance to ban use of. And then a question for those fine people on LNO, the description of electronic smoking devices mean, means any product containing or delivering nicotine or any other similar substance intended for human consumption? I guess I'm wondering about that word similar because nicotine is a chemical. And then, you know, how similar does similar have to be if it's, if it's, I'm wondering if the word similar needs to even be in this ordinance? Because the similar concerns me, because basically vaping can be basically smoking all sorts of stuff, and, um...
Are you talking about weed?
That would be one possibility, but it's not the only thing. There, there, there actually are completely non-nicotine vaping products that still have the same dangers. And I guess I would just question whether the word similar could possibly be struck, or if people on LNO would look at that and say, "Ooh, that's a problem because of something."
Needs to be broad.
I think it broadens it if I take out the word similar.
No.
Larry, you got a chance now?
Well, I didn't write this ordinance, but I believe this language is from the recent amendment to state law.
Yeah.
And that's the problem.
Okay, well, then I'll live with it.
Everybody else is okay with it? Any more comments, Robert, or you're okay?
Oh, I've always got comments, but I'm okay on this topic.
All right. All those in favor of the motion with adding the word of and other, that's it, right?
Just, just of, just adding the word of.
Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. We are on to, item number two, an ordinance to adopt SS 2333 relating to ATV and UTV regulations.
Move approval suspending the rules.
Second that.
Okay, any questions or comments? Larry, you have anything to add? Yes, Robert?
I would just ask, uh, the purpose of this is, um, there's not a lot of background information. Why, why is this ordinance being adopted? If somebody could explain that to me.
Right now, the, the police department doesn't have any way to regulate this, so it'd have to be done in circuit court whereby, by having an ordinance, if somebody drives their ATV down the street, it can give them a city citation, it can be handled by the municipality, us.
Okay, that, that's clear and concise, thank you very much.
Makes sense. Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Item number three, this is the item for which Professor Paulson has been waiting, an ordinance to create a workforce housing committee in the city of Milton.
I'll make the motion.
She'll second it.
So now the workforce housing committee voted to add one student, which will be non-voting. Could we add this to it?
That's not in the motion right now, is it?
Yeah, well, it can be added, so it's not a problem, so.
Because, do we, okay.
Well, this is the first reading anyway, so.
Could we pass?
You could ask for the amendment, and then it could come back for final reading.
Could we pass this ordinance tonight and then let the workforce housing committee decide if they want a student, and they can bring that back?
No, they already, they already voted for it.
They did vote for it.
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, so you will make that amendment then?
I will make that amendment, yes, to support the workforce housing.
So let me understand, you're not increasing the size of the committee, you're just designating one of the slots to be a student?
No, that will be a non-voting student member.
So you are increasing the size?
The city can still...
Increasing, but a non-voting member?
That's a non-voting member.
Does that matter to you?
Just as we've seen in other large committees.
Yeah.
They seem to get dysfunctional the larger they get.
Mm-hmm.
What, you, Kurt, you have anything to say?
Kurt, are you on the workforce housing committee?
Um, he's not.
I'm, I'm not presently on the workforce committee.
But he attends those meetings, so.
Um, I believe the discussion at the meeting was that the committee was in support of the idea of having a non-voting student member.
Is this a high school student?
Yeah, I think it would be a high school student.
High school student.
Why don't we let Abby, this F person, come in?
Yes, Abby.
So, um, the reason that the workforce housing committee took up the idea of adding a high school student member was at Mayor Barr's recommendation, and he laid out several committees that he was interested in, the possibility of adding a high school student to. We have a high school, a non-voting high school student member on sustainability committee, and it's a great working relationship. It's beneficial to the committee, it's beneficial to the student, it gives us a connection to the school. And so I took that to workforce housing, arts committee, and also back to sustainability because I think Mayor Barr was interested in the possibility of adding two non-voting members to each of those committees. So workforce housing took action, and they supported the idea of adding one non-voting student member. The reason that it's not reflected in the ordinance is because I, I think I told Professor Paulson not to include it because my thought was, because it was being considered by the mayor for several committees, I thought that maybe it would make it cleaner for a future ordinance to take care of adding it to several committees at the same time pending council action.
That's reasonable. That's reasonable.
That's fine. I'm going to suggest saying this back for a second reading anyway because I would think you'd want to consider the non-voting member as some different category as the voting member. So I, you know, it appears to me it ought to read eight voting members and however many non-voting members in the, in the first, um, introduction, introduction to the ordinance language.
So it's not nine, it's eight, okay.
Yeah, well, it's actually, could be 10, but either way, there's only eight who vote in, in any event.
So in the purpose of the quorum, you need...
Do we want an even number of commit, voting committee members?
I don't recommend it, but I guess that's what this is right now.
Well, couldn't you just have, couldn't you just add one to the nine, or no? Can we have?
Well, right now, the eight are one alderperson and seven citizen members.
Right.
Because number B is one non voting plan commission member, and they can add one more non voting student, and it's still eight voting members.
Could the non voting student be one of the seven citizen members?
No, because, right now, at least the way it's written right now, it needs cleanup to say which ones are voting, which ones are non voting.
Sure.
And that's where the confusion lies, I believe.
Could I make an alternative motion that this be referred back to LNO for cleanup?
Okay. Need a second?
Second.
Okay, any?
I would just ask that we, again, limit the number of members on the committees to something that's workable. So I, you know, most of the other committees that we have are seven numbers, and they seem to work fairly well. I think as soon as you start taking those numbers up higher, things seem to fall apart. So I would ask that, as you goes back to LNO, that you restrict the number of voting members to seven. I would like to make that as a friendly amendment.
This is what we, this is what we have right now, I mean, this is the.
Just amended once, just amended again, we have a second.
No, no, I mean, this is what is on the committee right now, workforce housing.
Right, and I'm suggesting that to make it more efficient, that it be limited to seven voting members.
Okay, so that means you are going to have to let somebody go.
I'm considered one of the citizen members of it, and I'd be happy to relinquish my post as a student.
But there was a plan to fill that with a citizen member.
The motion is.
Refer it to LNO for discussion.
Let's refer to LNO, and then we go from there, so. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to send it back to LNO, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously.
So we accept the amendment, so.
Yes, I accepted the.
Who seconded it?
Okay, so we are, we need a motion right here.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.